Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, August 7th, 2014 at 7:30 PM. Call to order?
Commissioner Cunningham?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Here.
The records show Commissioner Doe is absent.
All right, do we have an adoption of the agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we move on to oral communications, which will be limited to 15 minutes for anybody wanting to speak on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. I don't see anybody in the audience who would like to speak on oral communications, so I'll move to close oral communications. Written communications. In front of me, I have two pieces of information. One is a magazine, monthly magazine of the League of California Cities Western City, annual conference and expo preview, and an email that was sent to Ken Johnson from Dana Dilworth earlier this afternoon. Enter those into the record. Moving on to item F, new business. Number one, public hearing, 5,000 Marina Boulevard. Design permit DP-1-14 for renovation of the existing building, primarily to include modifications to the entrances, addition of windows with the north side cowl wall, changes to the building colors and landscaping. Westport Capital Partners LLC applicant, Marina Boulevard Property LLC owner, APN 007-165-110. Steph?
Yes, thank you. The applicant proposes to renovate the vacant three-story office building at 5,000 Marina Boulevard. The proposed renovations would be to refresh the building's appearance and function and to relate it to the 7,000 Marina Boulevard building for a campus-like environment. Building was constructed in 2002 but has been vacant for the last few years, since 2011. The property was acquired by the current owners earlier this year in their desires to refresh and upgrade the appearance of the building in order to enhance their ability to lease it. Their proposed proposal is intended to address the following issues. First is to establish a campus-like relationship. The applicant has indicated that in order to better fit the buildings to the market demand on the peninsula, the two buildings of 5,000 and 7,000 Marina should take advantage of a unique opportunity for establishment of a campus-like environment. This would be largely addressed through the use of colors, front entry changes, and a new pathway connecting the buildings. Architectural form will also be addressed with the application to follow on 7,000 Marina. The applicant has proposed, regarding colors, the applicant has proposed to update the appearance of the building with changes in the color palette. This would be the most noticeable change for this building. The color changes will be from earth tones to moving to a cooler palette of grays, white, black, with some yellow highlights. The effect will be a more modern appearance, which will fit well with the building's architecture and will also allow it to relate better with the 7,000 Marina building. Regarding the entry sequence, since the Sierra Point development was constructed on fill, settlement occurs separating the pile-supporting buildings from the entryways and surrounding land surfaces. The applicant has proposed to change the overall main entry sequence for this building to improve its function and readability and set it off as a more clearly inviting entrance. The new entry would also be related to the 7,000 Marina Boulevard building through the use of similar forms, colors, and materials. Regarding connectivity, the property line between 5,000 and 7,000 Marina divides the two parking lots. The result is that these two lots appear as one. This provides an opportunity to relate these buildings in a campus-like setting. To address this, the applicant has proposed to provide a path for connectivity and improve safety through the parking lots. Finally, regarding the cowl wall at the north side of the building, this provides a nighttime feature with a glowing effect, kind of a lantern effect as seen from southbound 101. It also allows for diffuse light within the space. However, its current configuration limits views from the building out to the bay. The cowl wall system would largely stay intact, but would be modified by a removal of the translucent panels from between the existing windows and replacement of those panels with new windows. In closing, staff, in closing, the application meets the design permit findings and is consistent with the design guidelines for Sierra Point as detailed in the staff report. Staff recommends conditional approval of design permit DP-114 for the staff memorandum containing the resolution and findings therein. Do you have any questions?
I'm actually very intrigued with the cowl wall. I don't know if that pertains to this discussion, but I was just wondering if I could have some clarification about the material. Does anybody, I mean, is this something that could be reused or is it something that would just end up as landfill places?
The applicant may want to, I'm not sure what their plans, well-
Well, I'll ask-
There's a recycling ordinance, actually, that the city does have for materials from buildings, so there would be recycling required. But the applicant may address, once you're ready to turn it over to them, overall their plans if they have other uses besides straight recycling for that, so.
Thank you.
I would add to that that the applicant should also explain what cowl wall is, cowl wall is for the audiences that are watching on the TV, because they may not have an idea what we're talking about. So when they come for presentation, I will ask them to specifically point out what you're talking about.
Thank you. Dave? Any questions for staff?
No comments for staff.
Okay. I have no questions for staff, so would you like to make your presentation with it?
Good evening. Thank you for having us again.
Is this good enough now?
All right, thank you very much. So, staff, thank you again for having us and thank you for coming out to the site several weeks ago to meet with us. I'd like to direct your attention to the presentation that we have up on the screen. As we've discussed in the past and what's shown in this package, thank you, Ken, for the great introduction. Going through this on the front of the building, really are, there's several primary goals that we have for this project. And like Ken articulated, really, the front entrances are our main focus of having them communicate to each other. So, starting off with this building, the primary elements that we're focusing on are the canopy above the front door, an enlarged opening for the storefront doors.
Can you use the laser so people can see what you're talking about?
Is there a laser? So, again, to start over, the current canopy configuration is going to allow us to add some articulation to the front of the building through a black oxide steel structure that we're looking to add on to the front of the existing canopy. We're also looking to enhance the front doors by making them larger. They're currently fairly small. You'll also see that these front stairs, we have some settlement issues that we'd like to better by adding in a new extended foundation that's going to incorporate these stairs down to grade. We'll also be adding a new ramp system that will allow some of the settlement issues also be captured within that part of the design. This portion of the glazing is intended to be a lattice system where some growth can come from our landscaping to rise up the building, help soften up the entry a little bit. And then also, one of the other large parts about the design that we're looking to modify is the paint scheme. Currently, the building blends in quite a bit. We'd like to have it a little bit more pronounced, and this charcoal color we're looking to present is our intended use. So if I could ask you to flip to the next slide. So when Ken was talking about the communication of the two buildings, currently you have two main entries into this area. You've got your drive aisle here and then a second on this side. The current orientation, we'll get to the elevation shortly, but the current orientation of the entries are facing straight out down towards entry, and then on the 7,000 building, which will come in the next package, is also facing out this direction. Our goal is to have the two buildings communicate, and right now, we're utilizing a pathway system that's shown here. In reality, at the end of the day, our goal is to work with staff to develop some kind of a planner system that's going to allow some walkway between here. The grades are challenging, so we're going to look for some advisement by staff at some point in the future, maybe through the building department, to modify some of the planners to help us get to that end. Can we go to the next slide, please? Again, this is the floor plate for the first floor. This is showing our area of work here with the entry. On the back of the building, on this side, this is the other area where we're going to be having the cowl wall system that we'll talk about in a future slide. So this is the proposed new modified entry. This shows the stair system coming straight out towards the parking lot, and you'll notice that a lot of the hardscape is now angled. And if you go back to the site plan, this will now help direct people towards the other building versus straight out towards the exit. The intended use here is that this will be your stairs that come down to new pavers that are enhanced landscaping out in front of the building and a new ramp system that'll help orient you towards the 7,000 building as well. So an elevation view, this is the, the top elevation is the original, and you can see the smaller canopy system that's here and a smaller door system. When you come down below, this isn't exactly representative, but you're going to have a larger canopy that'll extend down vertically and a lattice system that's going to bring some greenery up the face and an enhanced stair system that'll bring you up to the face of the building. If we can go to the next, Ken. So this is, I believe, looking from the east to west, so you can see on this side on the top, I'm not sure if I'm getting the laser anymore, there it is. You've got your existing canopy and a new pronounced canopy that extends out a little bit further.
Existing canopy.
That's dying on me. This, this section of canopy, this is showing the vertical nature of it, where it's actually protecting the people who are walking up and into, and towards the entry. Commissioner Minier, you had talked about, you know, the wind coming around there. We've enhanced this, and it's can levered out a little bit farther to help capture a little bit more protection as you walk up towards the face of the building. Can we go to the next slide? And this is where we talk about the cowl wall system. And to elaborate further, Commissioner Minier, a cowl wall system is essentially a glazing system that has composite paneling that is almost like a, you know, plastic of sorts that is used as a paneling system, and they're, they can be any kind of decorative shape or, or, you know, pattern on them. Our intent isn't to take it away. We'd like to retain it for its use. It does create a little bit of a light box at night. You can have, you know, some illumination coming through the interior of the space out to the exterior, and as you come down the 101, you're able to see this illuminated box. The problem right now that we're trying to solve with this, though, is it also limits the amount of light that you have into the space, and it also impacts some of your views from the interior of the space. So our intent is to go from the square-plugged openings for the glass, which is what you see here, and on the bottom, the modification would be to replace the cowl wall that's between those two and extend the glass line. So you're retaining the cowl wall system and its integrity, but you're adding a little bit more glazing to help with views and some light to the interior spaces. Can we go to the next one, please? This is coming straight from the north going south, and this is the elevation you would see if you were coming past Candlestick down the 101. On the top, again, you see, I'm sorry, this laser is acting up a little bit. But on the top, you see that the cowl wall system is present between all the plugged openings. You come to the bottom, and we're opening that up, and carrying that same line that's consistent across the left side of the building, towards the right, we're just going to keep it literally passing across the face of the building. So this gets into a little bit more detail up closer to the front lobby, which is, as you come in, the primary focus. This is our new expanded canopy in plan view. At this point, Commissioner Minier, we took your, your feedback that we received several weeks ago about the steel being exposed on top. If you look on this side, the intent now is to actually encase it, which is going to give it a little bit more of a full-body look. When you go up to the entry, you can also see this vertical plane. We've kicked this out a little bit farther, so that's an enlarged steel, black oxide steel On the pavers out in front, you have your stairs as you come down. These are concrete pavers with decomposed gravel between them. And our intent here with the settlement issue that we've been experiencing is to be able to use this as a maintenance piece. If, if we do have settlement at the base of these stairs, the stairs will not move, but the, the decomposed gravel, if it does subsize, we can come back in on a maintenance basis, build it back up so it stays level and treat it that way versus currently, part of the slope there is actually fading away, the pavers are sinking, and it becomes a trip-and-fall hazard. Going down to this lattice, again, this is intended to have greenery growing up the face of the building. Appreciate that. There we go. Much better. I think we can go to the next slide, please. So this is getting into our materials, and we actually have a board for you to look at if you'd like me to bring it up.
Sure.
So one thing that we're trying to do is incorporate some of the interior to the exterior here. Some of the material shown on this is some things that we intend to use on the interior, but it's also, it's all cohesive interior and exterior. At the bottom left here on the screen, you'll see the wood flooring. You know, that's something that's going to warmen up the lobby once we go towards the interior of the space. As of right now, though, we're not planning on any of that on the exterior. Coming up to the top, you have your black oxide. That's going to be the metal paneling that we're proposing around the canopy system. This is the new glass, which I actually have a glass pane here, too, that I'll bring up in a second. The yellow scheme is actually something that communicates a little bit more towards the 7,000 building. We don't have it incorporated currently on the 5,000 building, but this is the charcoal next to it that we're looking to use as the primary building color. The secondary was more of a white cream color. And then this is a representation of the lattice that's going to be utilized in front of the, the glass on the first floor. And then, Design Blitz has also proposed a, a green wall. This is something that we're towing around with the idea of incorporating to the interior of the space, but on the exterior, the intent is to have, you know, vertical growth going up the face of that, that screen that's going to be in front of the glazing. So try and, when you come into the front, could you go back to the last slide, please? So this area, as you walk up, we're intending to have some kind of a lattice. Right now, there's not a lot of landscaping in front of the building, and with the settlement challenges that we have, we don't want to add a lot of water to that area. A lot of the landscaping we're proposing is through pottery in this front area, but one thing we thought would be beneficial would be to have the landscaping grow up the face of the building slightly to help give it a more, you know, green presence as you walk up to it. You don't get that out of the entry right now. So, part of that presentation on the green wall that you see on that, that slide is in front of you, that's to communicate to the exterior, too, with the green wall going up the face. Go to the next one. So these are some existing pictures showing you the side-by-side comparison, and, you want me to grab that?
Try not to hit anybody with it.
So, starting at the top, Commissioner Parker, this is the cowl wall system that we were talking about. This gives you a little bit better view of what it is versus the elevation. So these are those translucent composite panels and then our glazing between. On the left shows, or on the right shows the proposed, which will just carry this along and give you a bigger glass line. On the front of the building, you can see that there's, you know, one static color, and this is actually more of a beige when you look at it in person. I think it's a little bleached out by the projector, but on this side, we're intending to use more of a white, which actually will communicate a little bit more with the 7,000 building, and then continue with the charcoal and some accent. Currently, there's some reveals that are in the concrete panels that we intended to paint a similar color here to give it a little bit of flair to it. And then, if you look at the top of the panel here, there is that yellow color, which is a little bit muted on this part of the design. It's a little more focused on the 7,000 building. And again, here's some more existing photos of the building. So this is your main entry. Currently, the new canopy would be a little bit larger than this, extending to the side and then also vertically, and then this window would be dressed up with a little bit more greenscape. And then, again, you have your, your predominant corner of the building and then the cowl wall system. Okay?
Actually, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay.
One of the reasons for you to change the cowl wall, because you said it shows from the freeway, from the Candlestick Park, is that the reason? The new glazing you put in there?
There are several reasons. One is to allow more light to enter the space. One is to allow a tenant to have a greater view. And then from the exterior, as you're coming down the freeway, we feel it actually creates a more consistent banding across the face of the building with the other glazing on the left of the building. Part of our, our experience walking into these buildings for the first time is they're very dark on the interior, and we want to use more of the light to pull it in. There's a lot of glass line on these buildings, but the interior build-outs are very dense. They're very window-heavy, so we wanted to open that up to bring as much natural light onto the interior as possible. We've found in other projects that we're working on that a lot of the tech companies that we're working with, or even just standard office build-outs, they're liking a lot more open space for their, their bullpen. There's a lot less private offices being used. In this situation, we felt that opening up a glass line would be more conducive to having a lighter, brighter environment on the interior and then giving them a view out to the, the bay, which is a great amenity to have right there to look at. So really, that, that's our intent, is to bring light in and give a little bit expanded view.
But it's not going to cause any kind of glare or anything from the, on coming traffic on?
I don't, I don't believe we experience it now, and our intent is to match the existing, so no, I don't, I don't believe that would be a, a cause for concern.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I have a question you probably don't have the answer for.
Okay.
When you, when you add extra glass like this, you're allowing, have you just calculated, it's just a throwaway question, really, what percentage additional light is coming into the building? And the reason I'm asking the question is relative to maybe saving electricity within the building.
Absolutely, and that's definitely something that we're, we're conscious of. We have not done a calculation to see how much that would actually improve the light. It's something that, as far as an energy efficiency, we're, we're planning on using, you know, high-efficiency glass in this building per Title 24 requirements. So I think coming back with that, you're going to have the energy efficiency from a heat disposition as well as getting more light in and using less energy. So I think both those things would be benefited by adding the glass.
Okay. Dave?
No, no question.
Would it be appropriate to make some recommendation now or after we close the public hearing?
Well, if you have further questions for the applicant, this would be a good time if you have.
I don't have a question, but I do have a recommendation regarding the front entry. The cantilever deck that sticks out. So I can wait until-
Why don't you ask the question?
Okay, I'll ask the question right now. One of the things that I noticed that if you put a flat cantilever deck like that and put a yellow band around it, it will bring the structure a little bit, I mean, it will show from the, from the outside, but did you ever consider putting some kind of a cabling cables, hanging cables or, or like ropes? Because if you want to carry on the, you know, this is near the Marina, so if you want to keep that theme, maybe one suggestion, I mean, it's, it's nothing to do with the structure or structural integrity or anything like that, but if you put a series of cable system that will look, that will really highlight the entry.
Okay.
So, something to think about, and I, I had it in my mind, so I said, let me bring it up to you.
I appreciate the feedback, and I think when we walked previously, I think one thing that has struck me about this building is that the predominant corner, if we could go back, actually, this will, this will work great, thanks, Ken. When you're standing at the base of this, to me, this predominant corner has quite a bit of a kick to it, and this is just a personal opinion, but I feel that the, this does have a bit of a nautical feel that kind of ties to the other building. It has, as you watch the edge of this, it does pull back, you know, somewhat like the keel of a ship. It pulls back in a, in a half arc towards the, the roof of the building, and the same happens on the backside of the building with the cowl wall. So it's not a completely squared-off, rectangular building. It does have some curvature to it that does relieve it a little bit. I think for your, your comment about the cabling-
You know, it's just like they did at the, at the Bay Bridge right now. It looks pretty pronounced. If you put that instead of just a flat thing, you can hang some, you know, cables at a certain angles that may really bring your entry there more highlight to.
I appreciate the comment.
Any further comments or questions for the applicant?
No.
So at this point, you're only thinking about using the yellow just above the door?
That was one area we looked to highlight, the, the building. The other area was through these slots that actually go around the full range of the building. The yellow shows up fairly nicely next to the greenscape on the front. As you go around the building, the charcoal color actually, my personal opinion is the white pops out a little bit more than the yellow might, and it's a little bit more palatable, I guess, on the color scheme. So our accent would be the yellow in the front, but then also the white as we go around the charcoal side of the building.
So, when we spoke earlier, you said that the settlement of the building is three and a half feet and the, the barrier is at five feet?
Yeah, currently, we've done a topography study, and several areas have had settlement up to three feet.
Up to three feet.
And it's our understanding by the documentation that we received by purchasing the building that the methane barrier is five feet below grade, and in some places, it's shallower than others. But in, for where we've taken measurements from the asbills that we've found and from where they're at today, we've noticed that some areas have up to three feet of settlement, yes.
That's around the building?
Correct, correct. So there, could I go back to one of the elevations of the front of the building? Right, right there would be great. So-
When was this building originally built?
This was built in 2001.
2001?
So this, this area along the front right here, you'll see that they've, the, the previous owner had added some river rock for landscaping in the front area, and you can see it subsiding next to the, the building slab. The building is on, on piles, which means that the slab is not going to sink, but the area around it is not, is supported. So, we'd like to keep as much water away from this area as possible, so we're proposing to use pottery and light ground cover in this area. Commissioner Minier had brought up that maybe we should screen some of the equipment on this side, which we're actually incorporating into our plan as well, which is a great idea for us to do that. Going back this direction, though, you do have a little bit less settlement in this area that we've experienced, but some of it is pronounced enough that we felt that extending the slab and connecting the stairs to the slab was our best way of mitigating that settlement. And then the area where those stairs reach grade, we can repair that through ongoing maintenance, through the decomposed gravel and resetting the pavers. That's more of a landscape maintenance issue than it is having to break out hardscape, re-pour it, and fix it on that level, which is a little bit more intensive.
So if you put, if you put the screening on the other side, would you think about also including the live plant wall or just the screening?
I think we were just thinking a hedge on the one side of the building. We really want to bring as much to the front entrance as we can. That was our main intent.
Thank you. That's all my questions, I believe.
There was just one other thing that I had brought up when we were out at the meeting out there, and it still sticks in my head, and I hope you'll think about it a little bit, is adding some more outdoor seating, just very simple things that are, you know, not going to be horribly expensive, but for the enjoyment of, obviously, anybody who takes the space, but also- the space, but also for the enjoyment of the general public. You know, a lot of Brisbane residents are out there a lot, walking their dogs and hiking and whatever. And I personally believe that a few seats here and there are going to actually really add to the experience of being out there. So I'm hoping that you'll think about that.
Absolutely. And I think that's something we definitely would like to work with staff through the landscape plans to develop something of that nature. On the front entrance area, just to comment on it, as you come out next to the stairs, there's a little bit of concrete work that we've worked into next to the ramp area, that it's going to have some pottery, but it also is an area that you could have, concrete areas that you could sit on, out on landings as you exit the building. So that's part of it. Something that we've experienced working with our tenants is that people spaces are very important. And more and more, the requirement for an assembly-type space is very critical, and I'll speak to it much more on the 7,000 building because it really lends itself to that a little bit more. But our goal with this is to provide a canvas for a tenant to come to these two buildings, see the interior atrium space on the other building, and then have it flow out into an exterior space that they can really personalize for their use.
Okay.
So I'd like to speak about that a little bit more on the 7,000 building.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
Any comments? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this matter? I see no hands, so I move to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Please second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What is your pleasure?
Well, I'd like to approve the plan. I find it, they've thought considerably about how to work with the space as it's settling, and they're being very careful about it. I like the fact that there's a green wall or an attempt at the green wall, and I think that, you know, the idea of improving the space so it's more appealing for anyone who would want to buy it, I like that. So I approve the project.
Okay.
Dave?
Yeah, I mean, I concur. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the tour. I was out of town, but I was at the previous meeting when this all came up. And yeah, it's very well thought out, and, you know, personally, the design is great. And my concerns were more about the settlement issues and the circulation, you know, for pedestrian and automobile, which you've taken care of. Everything's been really well considered. And then it's kind of a bonus, I think, and I'm grateful that you looked at how to kind of join the two and partner the buildings more, that communication may be subtle to some people, but I think it will help with the flow and hopefully gaining occupancy. So good job on that. Yeah, I think that's all. So yeah, I support, I support it as well.
Yeah, I think I concur with the two commissioners that the new color scheme is very good too, and it will bring the structure out. This particular project came before us back in 2001 when I was still on the planning commission meeting. And I went through my notes at that time, and we did at that time also recommend it, as I recall, to highlight the exterior color a little bit. But at that time, that was the train, I guess, to put the subtle colors. So with the changes, I think, you know, I really agree that these are good changes. And settlement is going to be a problem as long as we have the, you know, the ground below that is full of all the other junk. So there isn't, but I think the building, the way it's designed, I don't think structurally it's going to cause any problems, but exterior landscaping at every now and then will need the maintenance. Some of these outside stairways and all that may sink over the period of time, but that's a maintenance issue. So I don't have any problem. I think they did a good job, and we should go ahead and approve this.
Okay. So who would like to make the motion?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the 5,000 Marina Boulevard Design Permit DP-1-14.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reading the resolution, correct? No? Good. Okay, congratulations on part one. Item two on our public hearing is 7,000 Marina Boulevard Design Permit DP-2-14 for renovation of the existing building, primarily to include replacement and reconfiguration of the angled window systems and conference room bay windows, the main entrance, a new rooftop mechanical screen and landscaping. Westport Capital Partners LLC applicant, Marina Boulevard Property LLC owner, APN Steph?
Yes. As with the last application, the applicant proposes to renovate the vacant office building at 7,000 Marina Boulevard. This is a five-story building plus a penthouse, mechanicals level with a screen, and basement level parking. The proposed renovations would be to refresh the building's appearance and function as discussed in the last application to relate it to the 5,000 Marina Boulevard building for a campus-like environment. This is an approximately 8,000 square foot office building, which was constructed in 1986, and like 5,000 Marina, it's been vacant for the last three years. It was also acquired by the current owners just earlier this year with the intent to refresh and upgrade the appearance of the building and attract tenants to the space. The proposal is to address the following issues. First, as discussed with the last application, to establish that campus-like setting and enhance its marketability that way. Secondly, are the proposed changes to the angled window systems and conference room bay windows. These would be the most noticeable changes to this building. These angled window systems provide shading across the entire south side of the building, and that poses concerns over the ability to enjoy daylight and views and has been characterized also as difficult to maintain. The overall form, as seen from the outside, might be characterized by some as on the busy side and not totally related to the other side of the building. The applicant has proposed that the angled window systems would be removed and replaced with new, larger windows, which would be essentially flat to the wall plane of the building. It would have a glass ribbon effect like the other side of the building and similar to 5,000 Marina. This change would allow more daylight into the building and would open up the views from the building. And it would also provide for a more rationalized facade. Consistent with this approach on the southern facade, the proposal is to square off the angled conference room bay windows and extend the floors up to the window faces, thus allowing people to walk up to the windows. Similar to the changes to the rest of the facade, it will allow for greater enjoyment of the views from the interior. From the exterior, the proposal would retain a key element of the building's architecture and interest on that side of the building while modifying its form to integrate it with the new front. Then regarding colors, the applicant has indicated that the existing white building color would be retained, it would be polished up. Also to help achieve the campus relationship, some other color changes are proposed to tie the two buildings together. This would include the black and gray color theme as mentioned on the last proposal. Now would be to the surround around the penthouse level as well as to the entryway. For the entry, the entry sequence would be improved to help visually relate this building to the 5,000 Marina building, but especially to make it more prominent and more readable as an entrance. The existing round entry would be removed and a new squared-off glass entry would replace it. It would include glass walls as a tie-in to the rear atrium, and these would be brought forward and a canopy extended to make it more prominent. The form and color palette would be similar to that proposed, or the same really as that proposed for the 5,000 Marina building. The sequence of landscaping and stairs would also be improved to open up the views to the entry and allow it to be recognized as at a distance. Regarding connectivity, we talked about that, that the parking lot essentially functions as one, so they'd be connecting a path through that. And then finally, regarding the atrium on the north side of the building, this is, as you all, you saw, is a dramatic gathering space within the building, but has some missed opportunities in terms of outdoor connections. The atrium is proposed to be open to the outdoors with a series of three sets of doors installed into it, and a cantilever balcony would be added there. And that would allow people to step out from the atrium to this outdoor space. Also minor interior changes would be made there to more fully enjoy the views from inside. In closing, the proposal meets the design permit findings and is consistent with the Sierra Point Design Guidelines as detailed in the staff report. It would provide for a more rationalized outward appearance and more functional building overall and would fit well with Sierra Point. Staff recommends conditional approval of design permit DP-214 per the staff memorandum and via resolution DP-214. Are there any questions?
I have no questions for staff.
Can you give us the history of this building? And also for the audience, can you explain this building was also considered as one of the landmark for the city of Brisbane? Do you have the history of that as to when it was done and by whom, so that the general public can find that out too?
The, as I understand it, the building was, it was a dakened building, which was the essentially stuffed animals, as I understand. And so there was concern about light entering the building and degrading their product line is what I have heard. It has, it has had some recognition as a, for its architecture, its unusual architecture. And I think there's some, some degree of, you know, my, I use the term iconic building in the staff report, and iconic, you know, could, it's iconic in a way to Brisbane, it's known to Brisbane beyond that, you know.
And the recognition was...
I think there is some recognition.
By whom?
I would have to look back at the file record to...
Is that an architectural society or somebody like that? Or, I mean, perhaps the...
There was an article write-up that was included in the file record, but in terms of, beyond that, as a landmark status, I don't know that there's any kind of, yeah, there's nothing to that effect on this building. So it's more of, there was, you know, it has unusual architecture, as you've seen, and so there was some recognition of that. I think the proposal really enhances the building. I think you, you really, with what's proposed, rationalize the two sides of the buildings and tie them together better. The bump outs would be remaining, but they would be, I think, better fits than having an angled bump out, you know, from an appearance from the outside. And I think also the shape of the building and the atrium at the rear, still, you know, obviously, that's all retained and really adds the interest to the building. So I think the change from, the major change of those angled window systems would not detract at all, but actually would enhance the building.
So what's your understanding why the angled windows have been removed? What's the primary reason for that based on your, is it because of the light or because of the, you know, any other reason?
Well, the, why they want to remove that, they can address it in more detail, but it's for light, for views, and also to essentially rationalize what might be viewed as a confusing front to the building.
Okay, thanks.
And weren't there issues with leakage with that type of...
That has also been, yeah, so there's a maintenance issue as well.
Ongoing.
Yeah, maybe the applicant can detail those concerns.
Dave, did you ever go inside that building? Have you ever been inside some?
Yes, I have, but not, obviously, I missed the tour, so, but I did read the report since then thoroughly, so, but yeah, yeah, dark.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, no, no more questions for staff.
All right. Over to you again. If I may ask you, just because Dave was not present at the walkthrough, could you just explain a little bit about the existing windows and the limitations?
Absolutely.
Or those kickouts, is that what you call them?
Angled windows.
Everybody seems to have their own take on what they should be called.
Those things.
Those things.
Yeah, those big, big square things. If you could explain that a little bit today, since he wasn't there, just so we get a complete picture of what's going on, thanks.
So Ken, I think you did a great job of summarizing what we also understand about the utility of these windows. The building in itself has a very unique architecture, and its geometric form as it stands today is, what I understand, and I think what we've found is through utility, being that it was a toy company originally, the story I heard was that stuffed animals were along the exterior window line, and the paneling on the 45-degree projection was there to keep them from being sun-bleached. That's what I've heard. I think the building also, though, it has an architectural value from those statements by the 45-degree kicks that is obviously inherent in why the architect did it as well. I think for us, when we came and first walked the building, it has such a unique architecture that we know that there's a value there. There is something that is inherently appreciated by that. We looked at it and found that there were a couple issues that we wanted to alleviate with it. One was the light levels on the interiors. Through our investigation on the building before the purchase of the building, we also found that there was quite a bit of issue with leakage. But also, how do you actually wash the windows? You can't project somebody over the side of the building through davits to get down the face because you can't go back underneath on the other side where the glass returns at 45-degree angles. The maintenance of it, getting somebody up there to replace caulking or any weather stripping or anything like that is extremely difficult. In our preliminary estimates, the cost to actually repair as-is or repair the back of the atrium is a very large cost. So these things came into consideration, but when we looked at the building, our primary focus was the interior experience. And to gather more light, allow more light into the front of the building, when you're in the atrium, you do get a lot of light into that area. But in the front area where the office area is, the utility area of the building, you don't receive a lot of light. So by squaring off the glass the way that we've shown it, that was the first step. And I think when we first came in to see you, it was our intention to do that, but it wasn't fully vetted out of how we wanted to accomplish that, and I don't, I don't think it was received in the way that we hoped it would be. Really looking at what we've done now is try to hold the geometric value of the building, but make it more, more utility coming out of the change in the glass. So to keep the geometric form, we tried to remain with the pop outs that are existing, just give them a new shape and a little bit more of a modern shape. So we carried that squared-off approach to the window line, also to these pop outs that are intended to be conference rooms, where you can actually walk up to four feet off the existing deck out and experience a very unique experience in the building with glass line. And then obviously, the lobby is also squared off, and it helps it feel more, more like a useful building, in our opinion. So that was our main focus on the full process of making the change to the elevation. So getting into, if I explained that, I'm not sure if that was everything you needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the maintenance then, how does that solve the maintenance issues from the...
Well, at this point now, we can have people go over the top of the roof and come straight down like you would with a standard building and go ahead and do the standard window washings and things like that. So where before you couldn't reach those areas unless you came from below, which is a difficult thing to accomplish.
Cherry picker, how'd they do that?
Or boom lift. And you have trees in that area, so it's... And you have trees in that area, so it is challenging. So, actually, one thing, just one more note, one thing we found is some of the glass has more of a green color to it, and it's actually our suspicion that that's more from dirt buildup on the glass itself, versus actually the original color, because some of the other areas in the back that are easily washed are a different color glass, it seems. But that doesn't seem to make sense of how they would build it to begin with, so. At any rate, this is our proposal for the building. We think that this does keep a very unique building, a very geometric building that would stay consistent with the original intent, so. If I could walk you through the package, going on to the next slide. So again, this shows five thousand and seven thousand again, together. This is our area of work for the lobby that we're really proposing to make the modifications. We do have other areas, but this is our primary focus of trying to angle the entry. Right now, it's focused out towards this entry, which is not your main parking field. If you're walking in from over here, you're really wrapping around the building to get up to it. We wanted to bring it back this direction, so these two kind of communicate like we talked about in the five thousand building package. So, and this is, this is more of a blow-up of just the front of the building. So currently you have your main stair that comes out. You have a rotunda here that has a revolving door. As you come out, you walk straight down the stairs, and then most of your parking is actually off to the side. So the proposal that we're putting forward is to bring this glass line from where it currently is a little bit farther forward, to make it more pronounced. You'll be taking out all the glass that's there in the rotunda. It's currently a very large circle with a small revolving door here. We'll reorient the front doors to this side, so you're really coming out and heading out towards the parking that's primary, and towards the other building, so they're directed in more of a central area. One other thing to note is, again, we will be looking to project the stairs off of the existing building slab, so you don't have the settlement issue that you have on the other building. These will touch down on grade with the pavers and the decomposed gravel that we could take care of on a maintenance basis, if any settlements being experienced. You also have integrated planners here for a little bit more of a modern landscape feel. The intent on this site is to retain the existing ramp that was installed, which is actually holding up great. We would be adding new railings to this to be consistent with the new front patio or landing area at the top of the stairs. This is a roof plan, so what we're proposing, this is showing the roof screen. And one challenge that we came to at the beginning of the project was, there's quite a bit of cell towers that are attached to this existing screen. We've been doing some investigation on what type of screening we could put in front of this, and this package is actually showing it as an aluminum screen. That was, before I was able to connect with somebody that actually was able to tell me that there are materials that are made out of fiberglass, that you can put in front of those cell towers, that allow the wavelengths to pass through it. So we're in touch with somebody to, to develop that a little bit further. Those panels, though, can be stamped and generated into any contour or shape, so it will have the same aesthetic as an aluminum, if we choose to. Our proposal would be to use it in the same charcoal color, so it ties back to the five thousand building. So going into the elevation view, this is looking from the south towards the north, and on this side you see the existing entry, and this is showing your forty-five degree cantilevered glass system as you go up. As you can see below, we will be taking those out and coming in with more of a straight-lined approach. You can see that right here, this is the pop-out, and there's another slide in here a little bit later on, it's going to be a little more detailed, but not only is it facing towards the west, but also towards the south, you have two additional pop-outs on this side as well. This is an area where we actually have underground parking on this side, so we wanted to really take the entry and face it towards the other direction, so you're not looking at the parking structure as you're entering. So again, this is the view looking towards the east from the west, and you can see the existing, again, you see the forty-five degree angle for the glass, your existing roof screen, which is curved. The proposed new roof screen would be a little bit more squared up, to allow it to be a little more consistent with the base building. On this side, it's a little bit hard to tell with the elevation view being in two dimensions, but this is the pop-out that currently has glazing projected out away from the face of the building, and a forty-five degree kick back with the metal paneling. We would be taking that out, but retaining some of the structural members that are there to reconfigure it and have a new pop-out that's more linear. Going down to the base, this is again our new stairs that we're proposing, and the planners that go along next to it, and they squared off lobby structure. Next slide. So this is the atrium, as you're out on the bay looking back towards the building, towards the south, southwest. Currently, you see the roof structure here, and this gives a really good representation of the elevation change from the front of the building to the back of the building. Currently, these panels are flat, there is no forty-five degree kick to the window system. This was one of our primary focuses when we looked at it, that this, this side of the building gave a good representation of what we were hoping for the other side of the building to really represent. Again, you have your large atrium here that is three stories of open ceiling system up to a glass lid. Our proposed rear elevation is going to be incorporating these three roll-up doors. Primarily, this is, when you go into the atrium, it's a large area, but you don't have that connection to the outside environment. We really want to figure out how we can open this up and get people outside and have a little bit of indoor-outdoor experience, because it's such a large space. This would be a new deck with a glass railing, steel supports with a wood deck, trying to use a little bit more organic materials, and then glass roll-up doors to stay consistent with the elevation. And again, this is looking from the west towards the east, it's a little bit more of a split view, just kind of a close-up of this, the deck that we're proposing on this side of the building. You can see here the grade change as you go away from this. You actually have up to eight feet of fall between the building slab down to the grade So here's a little bit more of a detailed plan view of the proposed entry at the main lobby. It's a little bit hard to read these call-outs, but it's basically telling you which materials we're intending to use. Primarily, we're looking at the new glass curtain wall that runs along this end, the projected new slab, and then concrete stairs that come down to the precast pavers and decomposed gravel. Again, planting area along this, this elevation, and then retaining this pathway and proposing new planting through here. On the front elevation, you can see that we're trying to brand the buildings with a new address, so we'll be coming out, and these would be either made out of steel or concrete, we're not sure, but we would like to work that through with staff. The railing system would be a pipe rail with a glass railing system up on the landing. A little bit more detail on the pop-outs here, you can see the, as you get closer in on this in your package, you can see that this is about a four-foot projection off of the existing slab. This would be the black oxide steel surround with a new glass, full height, I believe it's thirteen and a half feet tall of glass as you walk up to the edge of this conference room. And then this shows your new elevation of your, of your curtain wall system, and the intent is to have some of the materials from the exterior extend into the lobby, so you have a little bit of indoor-outdoor communication of materials. Next slide. This is a plan view of your rear deck, and then an elevation, again, just showing the communication between the interior and exterior locations. The deck, Seth, correct me if I'm wrong, is it ten feet that we have the deck coming out at its maximum?
Yeah, it's maximum.
Right. So as we went through this, we were trying to make this a little bit more of a geometric shape than just a straight triangle or rectangle, so this actually is kicked out a little bit farther on the west end than it is on the east end. Looking at this space, again, the, the main focus for us was to try to use this as a, an assembly space for a tenant who might be using this building. And something that we found is that these assembly spaces are highly customized to a tenant's use. So looking at this, we wanted to give the canvas for them to come back, if a tenant comes in and wants to take the entire building, to have a assembly space that could flow from the interior to the exterior. So by using this deck, we're getting to that end, our hope would be that when we get into negotiation with a tenant and they're coming in to develop their plans, that we could work with staff to also allow them to expand this out onto the turf outside and extend their space into a more exterior space, knowing that that's going to be a more customized space for their, their own use. Next slide. So this is a little bit more of a close-up view. This gives a great representation, a little bit closer view of what is currently there, and you can see that to get to this glass, you're coming down, and it's projected four feet back from the, the most expansive point of the forty-five degree angle. It's very difficult to maintain these. So this is now showing the, the straightened-off glass, and then we'll maintain this pop-out, which is actually making this glass panel slightly larger. You're incorporating the floor level, you'll see here currently, this is the current configuration. Going a little bit farther, this is now the new lower edge of the, the face of the panel, so here you have a much smaller section of glass than we will in this, in this assembly. And this has given you a representation that you can actually walk up straight to the glass. Currently, when you're in the space and you try to walk up to these conference rooms, you have about a two-and-a-half foot to three-foot panel system here that doesn't allow you to actually walk out to the glass edge. Next slide. And again, going through our, our materials, the same that we were proposing for the five thousand building, to make sure they communicate, the black oxide steel for the surrounds. The yellow is a little bit more pronounced on this building around the pop-outs, it's going to be visible from a little bit farther away. And then this is the charcoal color that we're proposing as the accent pieces. And I'm not sure if you'd like to see, but we have a sample of the glass here with us. Would you like to have me pass that out?
Sure.
Yeah, great.
So this would be for the pop-outs?
This would be for all the areas on the front of the building, that we would be taking out the cantilevered glass system, and going back in with the, the vertical glass system.
So it's kind of a greenish color?
It's actually consistent with what we have on the back of the building.
Uh-huh.
So I think this next slide's a great representation of the transformation that we're hoping for, that right now, when you walk up to the building, your main lobby is a little bit protected, it's not as pronounced. You know, going on to what we're proposing with the, the new canopy that is going to surround with the black oxide steel, with, in tandem with the glass, it's really a good contrast of colors, that's going to help it have a little bit more of a presence. We feel that these pop-outs really give a new geometric shape to the building, to allow it to stay unique and contain its original intent in the design. Going to the back of the building, you know, right now, I, the, the three doors are really going to open up the interior space to have some communication out to the exterior.
You'll be leaving the trees?
Absolutely. We'd like to trim them, they haven't been trimmed in some time, so we're working on getting that done.
Okay.
Next slide, please. And again, here's some more of the, the original elevations. So you can see the rectilinear glass, the pop-outs, a little bit closer view, and then the atrium, this would be the proposed area where the, the glass roll-up doors would be So this is a little bit closer view of the pathway that had been discussed, and in looking at the site, I think our, our best option to help form this path of travel is really going to be to work with the existing planners that are on-site. Some of the grade change between the two buildings is a little bit more significant than I think what ADA would allow. So I think our proposal is to be to bring in this landscaping palette, enhance the planners as they are, so you have some milestones as you walk through the, the parking lot to give a little bit more definitive path, but not to change the, the drive aisle. We'd like to work with staff on that, but it's our opinion that by working through the, the drive aisles, you might have some issues with grade changes. And given our, our soil condition, we're not sure that we can do much to, to change the parking lot as it stands with its current topography. This design would stay consistent, it would just stay within the planners as they are currently, is our proposal. And the next slide. So this is a, a representation of the five thousand building, we have a couple slides from our landscape architect that have been working on this. This gives you a little bit more of a representation of the decomposed gravel between the, the precast pavers, as well as some of the landscaping, the new planner next to the stairs, and you can see some of those seating areas I was speaking about earlier, next to the ramp, having a terraced edge on that. What it's not showing right now is some of the green growing up the face of the building, but that's what our intention is. Next slide. And again, this is a little bit more of the plant palette, a little bit of California native and succulents to, to be a little bit more water-conscious. And there's again a watercolor representation. So here, you're seeing some of the existing planners as they are. I think our intention is to actually shift these more towards the planners that are on this side to give you more of a marker, or reorient some of the, the planners more towards a, a straight line. Again, in reviewing this further, the topography looks like it's going to be challenging to meet ADA requirements for a path of travel between the two buildings. And the next slide. So I have a, a sample of the concrete paver, if you'd like to see that, I can pass that out.
Sure.
A little bit heavy.
Be nice now.
Yes.
If I wouldn't be here.
You didn't know you were getting a workout tonight.
I need your mic for that. It's just concrete?
It's just concrete.
Hmm. Feels different. Is this a denser concrete or something?
I believe it is, yes.
The breakup would be very effective, because really the parking lot looks like a long desert of just a parking lot.
Right.
It's really ugly. It's really ugly. Have you considered putting in more planters between some of the parking spaces as well, or not?
We hadn't done that, but Ken, if you'd go back to the last slide, please. These trees, part of, I think what gives it the desert feel is there's not a lot of color to the trees as you're walking through. So, you know, whether it's a, you know, a tipu or a jacaranda, or, you know, any other number of flowering trees, that's what we're looking to incorporate to give a little bit more color to the parking field, which I think it'll give a little bit more presence as you walk through. If that answers your question.
Well, it does. I mean, as I look at these two buildings, and I'm sure you feel the same way, you know, the, the buildings have all this architectural features, and some are, the architectural features are quite distinct. And then it has this mass, just a mass of parking spots, you know, in this gray, and I can see that you're, you know, you will cut it up, I don't know visually how it will be to, if, if that would be sufficient, I don't know if the people who will purchase it will want to put in more, but it would be kind of nice to have even more foliage through the parking lots.
Ken, is it possible to go back to the site plan really quickly?
I, I, I think it will be very effective.
Yeah, and I think, speaking of that, it definitely is something we notice when we come into the front, the front entrance, and that's part of where we'd like to work on adding, thank you, Ken, adding a monument out in this area. We do feel that this actually does give you a good approach to the five thousand building, and by reorienting this, we feel like you're, you're getting a good viewpoint. The spacing on the planners is actually, in our opinion, fairly well spaced, but there's not a lot of, of trees throughout the area that really help...
You know, I never even noticed there were planters there. I take it back.
So what we'd like to do is propose to use several varieties of trees that have a little bit more of a flowering element to it, to help liven it up a little bit. that have a little bit more of a flowering element to it to help liven it up a little bit. Um, that goes back to some of the colors that are used on the buildings. They are, we were there this afternoon and, and with the fog coming in and, and the building being the beige, it, it very, it just blended back into the hills. And it shouldn't have too much of a presence, but it definitely should have some color. And that's what we're intending to do, to help bring the parking lot to have a little bit more color to it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm speechless. I never noticed those planters.
They're easy to miss without the color.
While we're on this, other site plan.
Sure.
For five thousand, you've got the, the kickout at the entrance relative to the wind.
Mm-hmm.
My experience at the Hitachi Building on the other side is that on those incredibly windy days, which I don't know if you've experienced any of them in Brisbane yet.
It was a little bit windy this afternoon, but.
It was a little bit windy, but it can get up to possibly fifty miles an hour down there. I've been in the Hitachi Building in the past and trying to get out of the building, I had to ask someone to help me open the door.
Really?
So my question to you is, have you thought about that relative to the entrance at seven thousand? It kind of just popped into my head as I was looking at that.
Not in the magnitude that you're describing, but Commissioner Minier talked last time to us specifically about giving a little bit more protection to the wind. And I guess I didn't give it the consideration that you're reflecting on.
Yeah.
But I, I do feel that the amount that we've projected this out, well, I don't believe it'll inhibit the door. I think that you'll be far enough tucked back that you'd be okay. I think we're at a point where if you took it too much farther, it might look a little bit odd to project it off farther off the building. I believe you have two, three.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about five thousand. I'm actually talking about seven thousand.
Gotcha.
Yeah. No, five thousand seems to be taken care of quite well, but I was thinking, okay, so what happens on those days at the entrance of seven thousand?
I think we'll have to work with our glazing contractor to make sure there's a properly calibrated door for that. Um, I don't know that I, we have this glass screen that's in front of it that will definitely cut down on the wind.
Okay.
Um, so that should help that effect. Um, and also some of the planting that's in front, hopefully that will do a little bit of that too. But again, I think I would need to rely on our, our glazer for the door system to make sure that it was, it was weighted properly.
Yeah, I just remember, and I've had several people who are down in that area, you know, say, you know, on those days, it's very difficult to get out a door. And I never met a door that beat me before, but the one in the Hitachi Building did. I couldn't open the door.
This is great, this is great feedback. It's something that we'll definitely have to pay attention to.
Right, and, and I have another question.
Sure.
On the back of the building, why did you choose roll-up glass doors? Why was that the choice?
There's, there are several that we can use. There's actually, um, if you go, um, could I go to, I think it's the next slide, Ken? Right. So if you look here, this isn't your standard roll-up door. And there's several types that we've contemplated here. There's a nano door system that's one that folds, kind of a bi-fold door that runs from left to right or right to left. This is a vertical of the same type that it stacks upon itself. So it doesn't actually roll back into the space. It just goes vertically up and sandwiches upon itself. Another thing that we've talked about is a glass stacking door. And it's really, I think at the end of the day, we wanted to limit the profile that it was going to go back into the space.
Mm-hmm.
With a roll-up door, you end up having the return. This keeps it in, in line with the, the vertical. The other way we could achieve that too would be with a stacking door. I think either one of those actually work pretty well, but.
Could you explain what a stacking door is?
Um, yeah, so what you have is, um, a long track with multiple sections. And as you come in, they stack upon themselves. And at the end of the day, you have one wider piece of doors. So each one is, if you put, envision your, your closet door at home, imagine five of those together. So they roll all simultaneously, one stacks and another and another, and they slowly come all the way down to the end. Uh, a lot like your closet door run in front of the, the neighboring door. But there might be five or six panels. So at, at the end of the day, I think it was our, our feeling that the best way to give the most open feel was to go vertically.
Mm-hmm.
So you'll see, right here, you can see that they, they sandwich up on themselves as they, as they go vertically. That was the least intrusive to the interior space.
Again, you might sort of, in your consideration of this, think about, so I was again, thinking about the wind.
Right.
Now, if you've got a, a vertical door that's opening this way and there's a hurricane out there, you can't really even open the door this much because.
Understood.
Go the full, how tall are these doors going to be?
Uh, between ten and twelve feet, depending on how the structural calculations work out.
So maybe if they do stack like you're proposing, then if you just lift it up from the bottom a little, you can still get some air in, but not have the hurricane take out the office.
Right.
Dave, this is your area of expertise, right? That makes sense?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've been in spaces like that. I, I've been in spaces like that with similar doors and they, it worked, they worked pretty well. So, but the wind is definitely a concern and.
Yeah.
It, it, it just creeps up on you and it's a lot stronger than you imagine.
Valuable feedback, definitely.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's brutal sometimes. Okay, brutal's a good word. Brutal.
Thank you very much. I, I think that was the end of our package. Is there any other questions that you had for me?
I have a question regarding the maintenance of those angled windows.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any data to show what were the costs before?
Um, I, I do not, but we, as a, as a management company, we have a lot of buildings that are, you know, have this kind of glass system that we're proposing. So we have a history of maintaining those in our historical amount that we have to pay for those types of maintenances. The maintenance I was referring to either, uh, before was actually the repair costs for all the deferred maintenance that we were going back to, to do new caulking and weather stripping. But if you look at logistically how you can go out to, to maintain and just clean the glass, where before you might be able to have a swing stage or a boom come over the side of the, the top of the building and just have two people go down and, and clean the glass. To really clean this glass effectively, you have to rent a boom lift, have multiple crews come out, cordon off safety. And the rental of a boom lift is, is much, much more expensive in our experience than having a swing stage go over.
And how often do you have to do that?
Uh, usually you wash a building like this biannually. It might even be quarterly, depending on what your tenant's requirement is. I, I think some people will do it annually, but knowing the location and the fog coming in, you're going to get your windows dirtier more often. So it, it is significant on an operating expense.
Uh, I was looking at a brand-new building that they just built in San Francisco.
Okay.
On, um, I think it's on Seventh Street, near Market.
Okay.
That has a lot of articulate angled windows and all that. So I was wondering that in brand-new construction, they are thinking about putting those kind of structures which are really enhance the, the value in terms of the architectural value. So if you want to sacrifice the architectural value, you got to have a little bit better reason than just the cost for the maintenance and also the, the leakage issue. Uh, I don't think you, I got much data about that, what, why it cannot be properly sealed. And also I didn't get much data about why can't you remove the upper panel and replace it with the glass so that your problem with the, with the light issue will go away. Uh, I've seen many, many structures that are done that way with the windows on both sides, but I didn't, uh, didn't get from your presentation or the discussion we had as to how extensively you explored that. I think the, the idea here from the beginning, from what I gather, was to go with the straight windows. And that's the way, that's the way your architecture was directed to do, in my opinion. I may be wrong. But I'll, uh, before I do away with iconic building like that, I like to have a much better data to show that solid reason why we, why we destroying the architectural beauty that is now, which is an icon. And, um, anytime when you're building like that, for example, the, the San Francisco Victorian buildings and all that, they are a little hi- higher maintenance in terms of the maintenance of those buildings. But we just don't, don't just go out and destroy that architect and make it a just flat, uh, you know, regular structures like many of them in the buildings. So the idea here, and as a planning commission, uh, what I'm trying to do is, I like you to maintain the iconic image that we got. And, uh, it's very easy to come up with a straight panel buildings. Uh, you know, uh, it, nowadays that seems to be the trend everywhere. But I don't see we can, I don't think we can, we can sacrifice the beauty of that in, in relation we get what you're proposing. And also the front entrance, I have a problem with that too. I think it's beautiful front in, entrance, and we're going to make it again a square re- with no details. Uh, I think there's something can be done. And I didn't get very much, uh, in, information again from you as to how much you explore maintaining the same rotunda effect. I think the lot of problems we had was in the front infrastructures, a lot of this, uh, big things in the parking lots and all that. Once you do away with that, then it will, I, I, we will have a little better sense as to how we can make these doors bigger and, uh, rounder. There are lots of buildings in, uh, throughout the world and in, in the back east and over here that I have visited many, many of those. And, um, I think the, our idea should be to maintain whatever, whatever is beauty there rather than trying to find the simplest way to, to fix it. And this is what I, I believe we're doing it. So, uh, um, other commissioners might differ with my opinion, but I'm of the opinion that, that this particular proposal, in my opinion, doesn't, it hasn't been explored properly. So.
We'll get feedback on that first? Do you want to respond?
Sure, yeah.
Sure.
We were doing a lot of research as well. And, um, we found out that in nineteen ninety-two, this building actually did receive a design award, um, from the Architectural Institute of America. And, uh, on that award, it was specifically quoted, what drew them and why they did was because of the atrium and the iconic stature of the atrium, which is really the most truly visible part of this building as you're going up and down the freeway. Cause a lot of the buildings from this, this side is a little bit blocked and you're able to capture the atrium for miles. And so we really truly are trying to embrace that and trying to maintain the atrium and really emulate it. And I'm personally of the opinion, um, that I think, you know, with what we are hoping to plan to do, that we can actually bring design awards back to Brisbane in terms of a great way of repositioning a current building and embracing that side, but also sort of taking it through across. So, I'll let you continue, I just wanted to answer that.
Thank you.
I, I, I would echo Eric's comments. Um, a- as far as our exploration of the utility of the existing architecture, our intent wasn't to come in on a maintenance basis and change any of these items. We would explore and have, in many other cases, in other buildings that we renovated, explored maintenance issues and, and maintained things. In fact, Eric and I have just completed also with Design Blitz, working on a, a project in, in, on Market Street, where we've taken a hundred-year-old building, renovated it back to its original, uh, state and ended up with a Mills Act on the project. This change to the front architecture, in our opinion, was to gain additional, additional views into the building, um, add the glass line that's more functional for an office use and leave it in a geometric shape that is still interesting. And like Eric said, embraces the prominent part of the building to us, which is the atrium. I guess that would be the, you know, my response to your, your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Dave?
I, I know part of it's subjective and, and that's, you know, and I respect Commissioner Minier's, uh, opinion and, and everyone else's that likes the old design. It, it just reminds me of that, you know, movie Logan's Run. Did you ever see that? The wastewater treatment plant was used as the facility. And it, it just reminds me of that, the angled glass. Some things, you know, need updating, but I think the, the core, you know, the heart of the building is preserved, um, which, um, I, I was impressed again by the design. I, I, you know, I, again, it's subjective, a lot of it, and I, I do like the design. I like the lines, but I, I still think the heart of the building is maintained. And I had a couple of minor questions that, on that end is like the, um, uh, you know, the revolving door.
Mm-hmm.
Was there a consideration for a di- for a different solution for that? And I, I bring that up in this discussion because I used to work at One Montgomery and, and they ended up, when they revamped the lobby and all that, you know, they took it out. They, I mean, there's an efficiency issue with revolving doors when there's doors on the side. So I was wondering if you had considered a different solution for the revolving door?
You know, the, the main driver on eliminating the revolving door really had to do with the orientation that we wanted to change the new door to. Really orienting it towards the five thousand building. In its current location on the corner of the, the rotunda, it, it makes a lot of sense. Going towards the other direction where you have, um, you know, the stairs directly in front of you, it, it fit the shape of what our intent was for that new orientation a little bit better. You could put a, a revolving door there all the same. But again, with the, the change in geometric shape we were proposing, there's a lot of cylindrical feel to this building outside of just the front. You have the top canopy, or not canopy, the, uh, roof screen.
Yeah.
That it, it communicates to. Part of what we're trying to do is, is to change the geometry, um, but still keep it interesting. So that, that's really how it ended up being changed to the, uh, a more enlarged door.
Okay.
End of the day.
Yeah, well, good response. Um, and one other question since I'm, it's open. Um, the, the viewing deck, is that, um, I know it's not required, I don't think, uh, public space or anything, but is that going to be open to the public to access or?
Our, our intent was that was going to be a, a tenant amenity from the interior of the building. But again, our, our hope is that going forward, when we do have a tenant, start to work with us on developing the space for an assembly space, that we could take it down to the green area in the back and that would be more on the tenant's side of the expansion of the space. I think our intent in coming back to Commissioner Cunningham's sp- um, comment earlier about the five thousand building was that that, that area towards the west side of that property might lend itself to a, a public amenity space a little bit more. That was, that was our goal.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Dave, we actually asked that question when we were out on the tour, if, if that back deck would be going down to the grass, which sort of seems like a logical thing.
Right, right, okay.
We did talk about it.
Yeah, I need to talk.
Carolyn, do you have any questions?
Well, I, I was talking more about from the interior, but it's not, you know, like.
Going out under the deck and then down?
You know, like being able to access it, like the public be able to access it at some point. You know, some buildings, it's, well, they're required, certain public spaces in the buildings, the new buildings, the public's allowed to go like whatever floor and there's the viewing area. So I was just wondering if those were considered for the public at all?
Not, not.
Probably not practical with the design.
No, not, not in the deck space and also the, the getting from the deck down to the grade, that was really, um, something we wanted to have, that the path of travel be something defined by the tenant.
Sure.
So that's really where we were going with that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
No.
Okay, this is a, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, so is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this matter? I don't see any hands, so I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, what is your pleasure?
I personally very much like the old building. I like the cantilevered effect. I spent a lot of time, uh, I phoned Mitch Bull before we came to the first meeting and he explained how, how it was to try to maintain the building. You know, what it was like for the, uh, different tenants to try to, to keep the cantilever from leaking, from caulking and, um... So in my mind, I did feel that we might have to leave the, to, to let the cantilever go. When it came to the roundness at the top and the roundness of the building, you know, which was very, which fits with the cantilever, but it doesn't, it kind of clashes with the atrium. And, and that's always been, you know, the backside of the building and the front side of the building are, are just two different things. Not that it really mattered to me because I, I did enjoy looking at the cantilevered effect. I, I really was kind of disappointed initially to think that the roundness at the top and the roundness of the. the roundness of the entryway was going to be eliminated. This has more of a streamlined look. I, and I, I very much like it. So I, I have, I'm of two opinions. I, I kind of am wondering, you know, whether we should have some of the roundness left in, but if we don't have the cantilever, I, I'm, I'm not sure. So I'm going to just withhold my opinion at this point, until after we have some more discussion.
Dave?
I guess the only thing I wanted to add is the, again, you know, it's somewhat subjective, but I think the main goal is to, you know, to occupy the building, and it's, since there isn't some, you know, society telling us that we have to preserve this, and, or it would have been considered that, you know, it's a dead building, in other words. So, I want the building to live, and we have to look at the demands of, you know, today. And, and if, if the core, like I said, the heart of the building was broken up so much that we would lose the integrity, you know, that, that was, I guess, originally intended, you know, I, I would object or agree with you with, you know, the commissioners about the cantilever. So, sometimes I look at it, and there's some fondness, like I said, it could be used in a sci-fi film, you know, in the seventies, but it's, so there's some kind of romantic part of that that appeals to me as a designer sometimes, but, but really looking forward, I think, I want the building to live, so I think the design is, is appropriate. Thank you.
Jamil, any other comments you have?
No, I think I made my opinion very clear, and as far as the occupancy of the building, I don't think it was connected because of the unusual architectural design.
Well.
That has nothing to do with it. I don't think we will increase the chances of renting this building by renovating the way it is renovated by now, or by keeping the same shape but improving the, you know, leakage and all that other issues, and getting rid of the top panels and replace it with the windows. So I don't think the reason for this change should be based on that we're trying to occupy this building, so let's go ahead and make a change. So, but I, I'm still, in my opinion, that I don't want to change the design the way it is. So, other commissioners may disagree with me, but this is the way, I'm old school, and I like to be that way, so, sorry about that.
John O'Kinnon, maybe you can answer this question for me. This building has sat vacant for a long time. Have you had comments back from prospective renters in the past about what they did or did not like about the inside of that building?
Nothing directly. You hear anecdotally, it was, you know, I've heard that it's dark space, I've heard that anecdotally from others who have experience in the building, who had experience attempting to lease it historically, but no, I have never heard from a prospective tenant about that specific issue.
But the darkness can be resolved by changing the, the top of the angled windows with like glazing, and that part is not explored by the applicant, that's what I'm talking about. There was cursory discussion about that, that it will be difficult to do, but what is difficult? And I've seen a lot of buildings currently, right now, they've been doing this. So, my idea was to have some more discussion on that, to give me the solid reason why it cannot be done, which I didn't get it from the applicant.
Do you have any more comments, Carolyn?
Well, if we give, if we give up the cantilever, and I'm willing, I, I'm, I'm absolutely willing to give up the cantilever, because it, it just sounds like it is a very difficult building to maintain. The pop-outs are very square. I, I still am disappointed at the top and the entry not being more round. I, I don't know why it would work, but in my mind, it- I would just rather see, hmm, I don't know.
Okay. So, what I see is, well, first and foremost, I fantasize about that building being some fabulous thing, too. I have unfortunately had the experience of being in there with a couple of clients over many years, and that building is incredibly dark inside. There was nothing appealing on the west and southwest sides of that building because it was so dark. And I'm certainly no architect, but looking at trying to change the cantilever panels that are now solid to glass, I think would require incredible structural changes-
No.
-to hold the glass at the top.
No.
And as romantic as an idea as it is, to think about this old building, it, I don't think it looks very appealing anymore to me. I do have concerns about the entry, and the reasons I have concerns about the entry is because of the weather. So that's something I'm a little nervous about relative to the building, but I think the changes to this building have actually enhanced it. We've got this incredible stuff going at the, well, when you're looking at it from the, looking at the north, the north side with all the, the decks and the roll-up doors, I think that's going to increase the value of the building to a potential tenant immeasurably. And, and I do believe, what we were told initially was that the redesign of the exteriors of both of these buildings was done to try and make it a campus feel with the potential hope that, you know, maybe one company was gonna take on both buildings, am I correct there? So by having one round and one not, we've got 5,000 looking like the stern of a ship, and I see the 7,000 building now looking like something like a cruise liner. So I do see nautical in both. Was anybody else feel that way?
I do. I, I, I do.
So I see 7,000 as being a cruise ship, and I see 5,000 as being the stern of some big ship thing. So I think that the applicant's done a really good job with it. Again, I say my only concern is the entrance relative to the weather, but I have no other issues with this application myself. So, what is your pleasure moving forward? What are we going to do here?
I'm ready to approve the application.
Dave?
I agree.
I disagree.
Okay. Well, let's make a motion here.
I make motion to approve 7,000 Marina Boulevard Design Permit, DP 214.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. No.
No.
Okay. Then we are moving forward. Thank you. Yes, we are going to take a break, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't forget the glass.
Oh.
Welcome back. Moving on to item three of new business discussion for proposed ordinance to establish an art in public places program for Brisbane. John, I believe this one, yours?
Yes, thank you. In November of 2012, the city council directed the Park and Rec Commission to develop an ordinance to provide a method of funding public art. The attached draft ordinance represents the culmination of about a year of work by the Park and Recs Commission. They worked on this from November 2012 and it was ultimately adopted or recommended for adoption in December of 2013. So, you know, it was vetted by the Park and Rec Commission. I know they had some subcommittee work that happened and have both, I think, a current and past Park and Rec Commission member here tonight if you want some history in that regard. Anyway, the proposed ordinance involves an amendment to Title 15 of the municipal code and not Title 17, which is a zoning ordinance. As such, the planning commission really has no formal role in the adoption of this ordinance. It's not an area, Title 15 really isn't within your purview. But the council did request your input onto the draft. So, it's being presented on an informational basis and whatever comments you have on the ordinance would be forwarded on to the council. They'll consider it in their formal public hearing on the matter. So, again, it is a little different than the typical code amendment that you see, which you are the, you know, formal advisory body. So, real quickly, let's go into the key provisions of the ordinance as it is indicated. The purpose is to provide a funding source for public art and establish procedures for the selection and citing of such pieces. And there are real two major provisions. One is contribution requirements is laid out. Basically, private, non-residential projects with costs, with development costs between one and five million dollars are required to contribute at least 1% of their development cost to the Brisbane Public Art Fund. Projects exceeding five million dollars in costs have the same percentage contribution requirement. They also have the option of devoting their 1% requirement to install publicly accessible onsite art in lieu of donating to the fund. So, that's the only difference on the higher value projects do have an option to do onsite installation in lieu of the contribution. That would have to be a publicly accessible art as well, even if it were incorporated into a private development project. Similar requirements for residential projects. Projects between 10 and 20 units have to contribute at least 0.5 of 1%, or half of 1% of the development cost to the arts fund. Projects with more than 20 units then contribute the 1%. And residential projects with costs exceeding $10 million, so contribute 1% of their costs or they'll have the option of doing an onsite installation in lieu of contribution. So, that's basically the funding program that's put forward in the ordinance. City projects with development costs exceeding half a million dollars also have a contribution requirement as laid out in the staff report. Second key component of the ordinance are the procedural requirements. Obviously, the issue of how you jury for public art and cite it and install it is, you know, going to be a very interesting issue and the procedural requirements basically set forth the crafting of implementation guidelines to deal with these kind of issues. Selecting, citing, relocating, or removing art, procedures for project-specific publicly accessible art, you know, the in lieu of installations. The implementation guidelines, which aren't in effect yet, they haven't been prepared yet. Under the ordinance, the requirement is that to be developed by a public arts funding subcommittee appointed by the Park and Rec Commission and the guidelines would be subject to formal city council review. So, those are some of the key highlights of the ordinance. Again, there's no specific recommendation for you this evening. You can offer whatever comments you choose to make to the city council. You can endorse it. You can suggest changes. You know, it's really up to the commission with that. Answer any questions and turn it over to you.
Okay. Let's go first.
I have a question on page F 3.4. I'd like to clarify this number 2A. It says, "Single and multiple family residential and live work developments with 10 through 20 units." What does that mean? The less than 10 units will not have to contribute anything?
That's correct.
So, why are we making single unit anyways?
Well, a single, a project could be a subdivision of single family, more than 10 single-family residences would be subject to the ordinance.
It's not very clear in the way it's written here. It looks like a single-family home.
That's clear to staff, but, you know, if you have suggested language.
A little confusing.
Comments? Well, I can say I did read this, but I spent more time on 5,000 and 7,000. So, excuse me if I'm missing or commenting on something that's well-covered in this, in the document. I think overall, before I moved here, or when I was in college, I was part of the Arts Commission in Davis, California. And, you know, I just, so one question is, has there, nothing against the, you know, committee, but, you know, has it been considered, you know, to formalize a body like an arts commission or, you know, with people that maybe have background or experience in design review and is, you know, is part of it and experience with art in public spaces, which maybe people do in the Parks and Recs. So, again, nothing against them. I just, that's one question I had. Has there been an official, like, arts commission body or a formal body considered? And then if that doesn't happen and it remains the way it is, I do feel as the planning commission, as a planning commissioner, that we, because of how things are structured in our city now, since we don't have a design review committee, official one, that we should be involved in the process of, and back to what you said, John, it will be interesting process. But I think that we should, my comment is that we should be involved because sometimes the art or the installations are going to affect the surrounding areas or, you know, the public, obviously, the public space and buildings around that space, which there are ordinances that we have to deal with that, you know, instruct us to make sure things are complimentary, you know, to the environment. So, I'm a little, I'd like to be involved, at least in some formal way, to review the project. I don't think it should just be left to Parks and Rec and then forwarded to the city council.
If I can just clarify, and again, I kind of breezed through the presentation and then you guys were tied up with the other business items tonight. But I think there's a couple, there's a subtle distinction here that maybe wasn't clear that the subcommittee that I referred to, that's going to be appointed by the Park and Rec Commission, their goal, their objective is to draft the actual implementation guidelines, not serve as a jury, not as serve as an art selection jury. One of the specific requirements of the guidelines that they're going to develop for the council's approval is to develop provisions that would discuss the selection of public art pieces. If you look on page F 3-6, the last page, in that item A of the implementation guidelines, selection of public art pieces through a jury of Brisbane residents, art professionals. So, you know, I think your points, and certainly if you want to weigh in that, you know, you as a collectively want the planning commission represented as part of that selection panel or process, you know, that's fine. We're not adopting the guidelines. They haven't been developed yet, right? It's a process-based, but, you know, your point's well-taken. If you want to send that on to the councils and advisory sort of comment.
Yes, I would. I strongly agree with that. I would like to be involved because we do deal with ordinances and making sure, you know, any improvements or things that are done in the city are complimentary to the environment and I think art is, falls into that category as well.
Not only that, but it's part of the visual impact of any type of building or structures or any development where the planning commission gets involved. So, I think this piece will also be part of the planning commission review, should be.
Where we'd be, well, John saying we would be part of the city personnel.
Yeah, I think there's, I think you have to realize, you know, I think, I think the idea of your participation is valuable and important, but you got to look at, some of these pieces may go in, for example, pre-existing public space, like a community park, like, you know, so it's not always going to be part and parcel to new development. It could be areas in public space that the Park and Recreation Commission normally has sort of purview over through, you know, improvements to public parks or this or that. So, I mean, I think it could be either way. So, I think the idea that your input is valuable, but the context isn't always going to be the context of new development, like citing elsewhere. But I think, I think the under all, or the overall sort of idea you've brought up is, has merit.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and one other comment I had was more of an interesting one is, or fun one is, you know, has, and I'm sure this will be part of the process, but, you know, considering permanent art versus temporary art too. I was hoping that temporary is a great way to, you know, to bring art in the community, but then again, have, have, you know, variety and a little bit of motion instead of dealing with permanent structures. So, I was hoping that permanent art, temporary art is also included in the criteria. Thank you.
Carolyn.
I heard similar. I had some similar ideas. It seems to me that there is no provision here for, like, a public art forum where maybe there's music or there's education for, in the arts or, and this looks like it's just for, for building structures. And I think that there should probably be, you know, if we have public places programs, you know, maybe the programs could also have places where we could have exhibitions or, or, you know, kids' art programs or, or even music. So, does that fit into this? That's what I was wondering.
I have to say my, my direct involvement in this has been pretty limited and I might defer to some of the audience members with some institutional history as to what was intended in terms of the phrase "public art." I don't know that it's been fully defined at this point or not, but no.
That was my next, my next comment was, would the commissioners like to address us, please?
Well, I'm a former commissioner, but I was on this, this public arts subcommittee that developed this. And in that, we took about a year and we looked at about 20 cities, large and small, at their public arts ordinance. This is basically what sometimes known, is known generically as 1% from the arts, for the arts. And it is not really designed to be about performing arts or some of the things, Carolyn, that you brought up. There are other funding mechanisms for that. Hotel tax fund is very, very much directed towards, towards performing arts and street fairs and so on. But this is really about putting into development, making sure that in development, one component is, and really more permanent, one component of that is, is public art. Public art, as we think about it, we might just think, well, the first thing that comes to mind is, okay, there's going to be a statue in the middle of, in the middle of a park or something. But public art is really, really much broader than that. There's a whole subdivision of environmental public art, for example. One very specific example that is, that is in the process right now in the city is the, is the rebuilding of the skate park. Now, and I was involved in the teen services subcommittee that discussed that in its infancy as well. The skate park people came in and talked to us and they talked about skatable public art. So, if we had, let's say at this moment, we had $50,000 in an in lieu of fund for public art, as we went through the skateboard project, we could potentially apply that to the skateboard park for skatable public art, which would make this skate park all that much more exciting and invigorating and so on. So, does that, does that answer?
Very much so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, did you want to add anything? Since we have you captive.
I'm just looking at my notes. I think that Kevin covered most of what I was going to talk about. Let's see, I think, first of all, Karen Lentz from the Park and Rec Commission. Hello, first time I've ever addressed you guys.
I know, it's nice, actually.
Good evening. Thank you. I just think it's important for us to remember that we're pairing this, this with the resolution for the implementation. And that's a process and that will be, we hope, a public process, working with members of the community to identify exactly how this panel will be juried and how, who will be involved, how will we deal with maintenance issues, all of that. So, keep in mind, this is really just half and the other is yet to come, but it will involve others because I think it's important that it is a public process. So, you might feel like we're missing some implementation information and that's why, because that, that is part of the resolution. And I think that's it. If you have any questions, I'll be sitting right there.
Actually, I do have a question for you. As you were involved in getting this ordinance to where it is right now, when we look at page F 3-6, section A, "The selection of public art pieces through a jury of Brisbane residents, art professionals, and city personnel." That jury of Brisbane residents, can you expand on that a little bit more about how you thought maybe that would occur? How does one choose the jury of Brisbane residents? I can see that being a very interesting process.
I agree. And that is part of what, as a process, we will decide. In my vision, it will include Brisbane residents with backgrounds in various areas, including the arts, the environment, it's all of that. Business, we need to all come together, I think, and have a voice. We need to be well-represented on that panel. So, but exactly the makeup of that panel will be part of the process of determining the resolution and the implementation guidelines.
Well, I have something to say and I'm really pleased that we've gotten this far.
Me too.
We've needed it for a long time.
Wonderful.
I have a question for the staff. So, the buildings that are sitting empty that have not been built, such as Sierra Point, they would not be putting anything into this? They would be grandfathered out or how does, does anybody know?
That's a very good question. I would think a project that had a development agreement would probably be excluded, but if a project, because typically the, the fees and everything tied with that development are tied to the approval date. But if you had a project that wasn't subject to development agreement, it would seem to be that when they came in for a building permit, they would be subject to the fees in effect at the time they apply for a building permit. And that's what this is tied to, building permit issuance.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Right. I think the Parks and Recs did a fabulous job. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, we did our homework and we looked at such a wide variety of resolutions, I mean, of guidelines. It was important to us that we look at successful programs in other cities and model our guidelines after those successful models. And we also tried to choose cities of similar size so that it made sense. But, you know, we did a careful look and some, a lot of research and we're very proud of what we came up with.
My, my only concern is still, I guess, the wording of section A. It seems a little exclusive in part to me, rather than inclusive, of the public as a voting body on something what I perceive to be this large. And quite frankly, I think this is going to be fun, trying to get everybody to agree on, first of all, what is that piece of art? Who is going to choose it? And are we going to have a referendum and a vote of the entire town to agree on anything?
I hope not.
Well, what, Karen, what would you recommend instead of, is it the wording of a jury of Brisbane residents?
I, I think that sounds a little exclusive.
For a panel.
I, I don't know, I'm not sure. I just, Kevin, come right up. This is a discussion, right?
Soften it.
Come on, add to that.
I, as I read this, I absolutely agree with you, Karen, and perhaps I think this should be changed and be left much more vague at this point. We had, we had, in our, in our subcommittee meeting, we had lots of discussions and looked at the ways that different cities. ways that different cities made these decisions.
Right.
One of the things that, that is very unique about Brisbane considering a public arts ordinance, we are a tiny little town-
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
-and most public arts ordinances, a lot of them, you look at, are big cities, sometimes with a full-time staff that does nothing but art curator, right?
Look at the part, right.
We don't have that. We do have big city public development, big city development coming down the pike, which warrants having-
Yeah.
-public art be an integral part of that development. So that, so, so we discussed lots of different ways that this, that this could be done. We never really, of those ideas, brought them any further forward than, than general discussion within the commission as a whole. And when we sent this up to the city council, we only sent that, that, that part which, which says how we think the money should collect, be collected, not how it's going to be decided. That still is something yet to be worked on. So I think that the wording on this, because this would go into the, the ordinance, the wording on this should be made a little more, a little less specific, because this might lock us into a process, even though it's not terribly specific. It might lock us into a process that, that is not the best fit for us.
Right.
We've had a lot of discussions, and we, one of the things we examine about other cities that, that came, that did public arts ordinances, is that most of them had a process where they, they applied for grants, they got grants awarded to have professionals come in and do workshops with the community, both for the purpose of educating the community about what public art is, and how it can enhance and become part of, of, of the identity of who we are as a community. And then also to get from the community what would be a good way to navigate the decision of what public art is going to be chosen when we get to that point. Because whatever's chosen is going to be controversial, it's going to be a big debate within the community, it should be a debate-
Right.
-within the community. That's what's good about public art. Good public art will be controversial, it should be controversial. And to that extent, actually, last, was it, week before last, we took our stab at writing a first grant, one of the staff members identified a grant. We don't know whether we'll get it or not, but we took a stab at it, we wrote the language for it and so on. So, we did feel that there should be, that there, that there does need to be some community input from community leaders, commissioners, and so on, about this implementation half. But what's before you right now is just the, the ordinance, which is the, the first half, which is, yes, we do agree that money should be allocated from development in the future, to make public art a, a priority within our community.
Okay.
I'm writing as we're speaking, because I'm-
I can sit down.
-trying to write. I'm thinking, maybe something along the lines of A, instead of what we have, something like, the, since it says above, "Implementation guidelines shall include, among other things, provisions regarding," and then it can say something like, "Formation of an appropriate committee to select public, to make selections regarding public art," or something like that. I mean, it-
Make it more vague.
About, yeah, more vague, and more about, we are still in the process of figuring out what that is.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that'd be better.
Yeah, I, I think, I think there's going to be a few people offended by the current language.
Well, we have a very offended letter as we speak.
I absolutely agree. And another thing about, about keeping the implementation, how we make this decision, out of the ordinance itself, but into a separate resolution, is that the resolution is easier to modify as we go along, whereas an ordinance is much more difficult thing to change. So, I would suspect, in, and we're talking about decades to come-
Mm-hmm.
-that, you know, we'll make some missteps along the way, and that the implement, the way we, we discuss, debate, and decide how we're going to use this money for public art, that may have be, have to be modified as we go along and as we learn from our mistakes.
Sure. So Karen, can you read again how you would change A?
Let's see, I'm just trying to make it make sense within the context, provision regarding. How about something like this, jump in if you have any ideas. The, the formation of an appropriate committee to make selection, to make selections of public art pieces. Keep that little section in there.
That's pretty vague.
[laughing]
I like that.
Vague enough?
Well, I actually do like that.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments? I mean, I, I just looked at this and went, oh.
Because that's true, that's what we are-
Right.
-still needing to do, honestly, so.
So can we make-
But the committee will work through the Park and Rec, or it will be a separate committee by itself, and they'll will make the recommendation of what. Because normally you need some kind of a process to go through. And one of the suggestions that Donna Delbert made here is that it should be through planning commission, should be involved. Do you have the letter?
Yeah, she, she did sign up.
So, I think-
Through the chair, if I could respond. Again, the, the guidelines, which will be adopted by the council, would establish this committee composition, whatever guidelines, broad or vague, however they want to do it, at the time they actually adopt the guidelines. There's nothing in here that's creating the committee.
Right.
This, this ordinance is not creating the committee, all is sort of a, a roadmap for how, how these implementation guidelines, what they're supposed to cover, which includes the committee.
When you say the formation of the committee, that means you are forming a committee, right?
No, it says, "Implementation guideline shall include provisions regarding the formation of a committee, provisions for the formation of a committee." It doesn't say we're forming a committee.
Could I make a suggestion?
Of course.
Maybe perhaps the planning commission, I mean, the planning staff could let us know when this will go before the council, since it sounds like members of the planning commission want to be there.
Okay, I, I think that's definitely a recommendation we should make back to the, the city council, that that language seems really inflammatory, as it is in section A. And that Karen Lentz has rewritten it, we like it, sort of how it is.
Or, or I might just recommend not to confuse, but even take it back one more, and just simply say, "The selection of public art pieces." I mean, that's really, the implementation of the implementation guidelines, it's not-
Well, that's true.
You don't even have to get into-
That's even simpler.
Sort of move everything.
Yeah, the body, yeah.
Isn't this nice, how we can all work together, that's great. Yeah, and just take the rest of it out, "Through a jury of Brisbane residents, art professionals, and city personnel." It's like, ooh, I can see fire and brimstone already with that, with that language.
We already got one.
Well, I, I-
I like that recommendation, I think that'll work.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Right here.
Thank you.
I have one question regarding the, the private non-residential building development cost, one million for 1%.
Which section are you on?
It's a section 15.85.050. I understand that it came from looking at the resolutions from, the same kind of guidelines from the other cities, is that true? Okay. The question I had was the projects like Baylands, for example, where they have several phases involved, phase one and phase two and phase three. What will be our recommendation here in terms of collecting the money? Because sometimes the developers, what they do is they, they spend the money on certain things that they like, but they don't put the money in the, in these kind of funds, you know, the, with the public arts. Should that be some kind of a language here, or?
This is not, this is not a, um-
Maybe later on.
This is not a voluntary, I mean, this is a provision of the code. When you come in to get a permit, you shall pay this fee. So there's nothing voluntary about it on the part of the developer.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about is the developer has to put this money upfront, right?
It's part of the building, is, when you issue a building permit, you pay it as part of the building permit.
So it's not like later on-
You get, you get the money-
Okay.
-right away.
And it's okay.
[laughing]
I'm really glad this is coming to fruition.
Yeah, this is great, I'm excited.
All right, now I'm happy with this, section eight, thanks, Dave.
Yeah.
And this money will be set aside in a separate fund, right? It won't be part of the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's good, thanks.
Thank you. I, I don't have any other comments, do you have any other comments?
I'm fine.
No.
Any other comments, want to add any more comments, in Chuck here? We've had our first meeting together, how nice. Okay, I think you've got them.
Keep coming back here, we'd like to see you guys.
Yeah, no, I think it would be great if we can work on some more things together. Okay, moving on, item G, and items initiated by staff. Thanks very much for coming.
Thank you.
Just a point of order, do you want to make a formal motion on your suggested changes, or did you by acclamation do that, or?
Um, well, I think Dave said it, but if we can make a recommendation back to the city council, that under the implementation guidelines, "Shall include, among other things, provisions regarding," and change section A to only read "The selection of public art pieces," and strike the rest of that sentence. Okay, is that good? Is that all I needed to do?
I don't know if you want to vote on it?
Oh.
It is a business item, if you want to vote on it.
We can vote on them.
Discussion.
I thought it was a workshop.
No, it's not a workshop.
Okay, so, do I, do I, do I have a motion on this, then?
I will make a motion to-
Great.
-make these proposed changes as a-
As stated.
As stated.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All good, thank you.
It's official.
It's official.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item G, items initiated by staff.
Um, I don't, I guess the housing element will be back in front of you for a formal public hearing in the next meeting in August. I think that's about all I have for you at the moment.
Okay.
What about Bayland, EIR, anything?
It's under preparation.
Still.
Okay, I'll check.
Okay, okay, that's it?
That's it.
Nothing else? Okay. Moving on to item H, items initiated by the commissioner.
I have a question. On Bayshore, there is a building that looks like it's almost finished, and it came before the planning commission. That color is, is monochromatic, and it doesn't seem to appear to be the colors that they presented. Are they going to put any other color, or is it going to just stay that sort of dirt color? Do you have any idea?
The, the colors are, are what, what were approved by the planning commission before. You, you will have, there's some landscaping in the front, some actually plum trees, which will be very colorful, just leaf themselves, they'll-
But we had different colors. We had, you know, a different color for the, the trim. It's just one color right now. Are they planning on putting a different color in for the trim? I mean, it wasn't just brown on brown.
I'll double-check that.
Yeah, that would be great, because it's kind of dreadful. You know, just to, to have it, you know, there's obviously trim there, and then it's just one, almost looks like a primer. So I, I was confused, it's been that way for six weeks?
Look into it.
Any other items-
No.
-from the commission?
Green building ordinance, or subcommittee, we have our dates, release some proposed dates on the calendar. First one, I believe, September 3rd, and September 24th, and then somewhat time in mid-October, possibly. So, that's on the move, that's good.
Hopefully the green building ordinance will be on the move soon, too, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, September 3rd.
September 3rd, we got it.
Yep, and then the sustainability committee, subcommittee, I, we're waiting to schedule the meeting, I haven't, I don't have the date on that, but I'll have to check into that.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Item I is the cancellation of the regular meeting of August 14th, 2014, and adjournment to the regular meeting of August 28th, 2014, at 7:30 PM.
So I make a motion to cancel the regular meeting of August 14th, and adjournment of the regular meeting of August 28th, 2014, at 7:30 PM sharp.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and-
Aye. Thank you.
Good night.